Seven o'clock, we'll call the village board meeting to order. If everyone rise to say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will please call the roll.
Not here.
Don't. March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, regular village board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Moravka.
March.
Yes.
Yes.
Bowden.
Bowden.
Ham.
Yes.
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll pay period ending nine twenty-one nineteen in the amount of fifty-one thousand nine eighty-eight fifty. Pay period ending ten five nineteen in the amount of fifty-one thousand eight ten seventy-nine. Accounts payable, general fund, two thou- two hundred eleven thousand four hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents. Motor fuel tax fund, fifteen thousand nine twenty-nine oh one. Giving a total of all funds, two twenty-seven three forty-seven fifty-five. Are there any questions on the bills or the payrolls? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, second by trustee Ham.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions? Reports of committees, village administrative report.
Uh, I just want to um kind of go through with you what we've done with the garbage bills and the transition with the with the billing. And I've got on the my report kind of a timeline that we've gone through so far to date, so if I could just go through that with you. Starting February eighth, we had some that we sent out. Delinquent accounts received a letter from us that a lien would be placed on their property if their outstanding balances weren't paid. That was February eighth, two thousand nineteen. Then in July first, an initial refuse bill went out to them. Um, that just their regular bill. In July eighth, we did an addendum to the contract. Newspaper article was written about that. July second, we would send a second notice out for their regular bill. August ninth, residents received a bill, a notice of the billing would switch. And that included a notice that bills that weren't in good standing would need to get their balances paid and they need to contact the village. And we put out social media posts on that and notifications and also put that on the website. September fifth, collection letters went out to individuals with outstanding balances, letting them know that they had to be paid by October first to avoid a service interruption. We have fifty-three uh, we have fifty-three accounts with outstanding balances. And um, that amount was about approximately nine thousand five hundred fifty-eight. We um, have that down now to about six thousand one hundred eighty-two. So that's a difference of three thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars. So we've, we've lowered our accounts receivable down to about thirty-five, thirty-five percent to date, so we'll keep working on that. Um, we did send out a shut-off list to Home disposal on September twenty-seventh. So um, we have not turned service back on yet for those for those accounts that we sent that list out. So we're working with those with those individuals if they contacted us. Some we haven't received a contact from, so um, hopefully we'll, we'll continue to as, as they start to maybe get the message that they've had a service interruption, we'll, we'll hear from them and um, and, and work with them and get their account up to date. So um, just wanted to give you an update on, on that situation. I'm just to um, touch on another item on my report. And if you have any questions on anything else, please let me know. We, we did apply for a speed reduction on Wilmington Peatown Road with Will dot. And we, we did not meet the thresholds in order to get that speed reduction. And so, but we, and we do have that recorded here interested in seeing it. But, but I did want to point out that we did apply for that. They did do a study and we did not, we did not meet those thresholds at this time. We did, we have given out several applications and have had a lot of interest in, in the downtown for some new businesses and redevelopment. So I just want to point out that this might be a good time for us to kind of maybe really start to drill down on a downtown plan for, for the TIF and what we want that plan to look like. But I mean, and I'm working with our TIF consultants on kind of working out something rough to present to you. You know, whether it be, and I know you've heard from the consultant in the past about you know, whether it be a pay-as-you-go or do, or do we have some kind of facade improvement plan or a little interest loan program. And it could be all the above, but kind of getting your feedback, buy-in, and approval of all the above. So we'll work on something and, and bring it to you and talk about it in more detail. But it's probably something that's, I mean, we didn't have as much interest in the beginning and now that we're starting to get more interest in having the downtown businesses come and do demos and get coffee shops in the downtown and we should probably have, get our plan in place.
That's all. And a little longer than I usually do.
Nope, not many questions for, from the administrative report.
So how many accounts are there remaining? You said you had fifty-three.
There's about twenty-six that we've got on our shut-off list. We have some that are just our commercial accounts that we don't have on that shut-off list that we have to probably apply some different strategies because a shut-off is not going to have them.
How about commercials are all like individually filled?
Well, they maybe used to have water and tour. And then we don't have water and tour, they don't have water and tour anymore. So they have still.
Oh, so it's not garbage accounts?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right. So we'll have to look at those separately.
Okay.
Any other questions? No police chiefs report tonight, engineers report.
I had nothing to report.
No old business, move on to new business. Item A, Kay Ward, Kay Tysey requests to use Ratchy Mill as a wedding venue, twelve twenty-one nineteen. Come on up and give your name.
I'm sorry, first time.
You're fine. Can you give your name for the record, Damon?
My name's Karen Ward, I'm president of the Peatown Historical Society.
I know Amy has met with you and.
Yes, I do.
Talked with you. So do you want to fill the board in, Amy?
Sure. Yeah, we um, this is maybe one of our first requests like this. And so I went out and, and just wanted to um, kind of just assess the structure for any kind of visible dangers or, or issues. So this would be a wedding, twenty-five guests. Half-hour ceremony. Half-hour ceremony. It's just a ceremony, yeah. Maybe in the winter. And so took a look at it as far as the capacity and things like that. And I, I mean, there's, I checked with our insurance, our liability insurance, and they do not cover a special event. So the recommendation would be to have a waiver from the parties using the structure and also have them get their own special event insurance, which would be a minimal cost. Okay, and so they would go to Kim Tysey? Correct. Okay, I wasn't sure when we were talking. Yes. Okay. Yeah. Unfortunately, she's not here. I'm surprised. And we have, our, our insurance recommended a some, a, a place where you can get the coverage. If you choose to use a different, if she chooses to use a different place, we would just want to get that. Okay. Insurance place approved by our insurance. Okay, yeah, fair enough. But it will be minimal cost. For a hundred dollars, they said it should run for you for the, to get the coverage. Okay. We had the fire department come out and just kind of walk the structure and they were only use the first floor. And um, and, and they said it's about six hundred square feet. And for twenty-five people, they said it would not be an issue.
I move approve, approve the request pending, you know, the correct insurance.
Give a second. Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Bowden to approve the request to use the mill for a wedding ceremony on Saturday, December twenty-first, two thousand nineteen at eleven AM. Pending proof of proper insurance and also a waiver.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Marook?
Yes.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Amy, then I can touch a few.
Yes.
With them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get you that in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Item B, P Brogan requests to film movie scene on ten seventeen nineteen at First Midwest Bank. You want to stop?
Yes, of course.
Give your name for the.
Oh, yeah. My name is Phil Bogdan. I'm originally from Skokie, Illinois. I'm working with a company based out of Orland Park called NPI Media. And yeah, we've, we've actually kind of come to fall in love with this town. And we would very much like to film here this coming Thursday.
Amy, I know you've been talking with them too.
Right, right, we got, we got a call from First Midwest Bank and they're like, you know, would it be, you know, okay if like we had a, a movie in our parking lot? I'm like, wow, gee, this is interesting. So then we started, we got in contact with the movie company here. And Phil kind of filled us in about what they were proposing. And so you have a little bit more detailed information on the second page where they're, they give you kind of the the scene they would like to film in the parking lot. They've been filming in, in unincorporated Peatown. And um, so we just wanted to make sure that it would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area or blocking streets or you know, have lights or amplified sound. And so I think that, you know, he's covered those items in, in this, in the, in these questions. The, the time of the scene shooting, it would, would be kind of a long day. It would be nine AM to ten thirty PM. But um, there was some discussion between Phil and I about the location and, and you had originally wanted to do it at First Midwest Parking Lot, but that you had talked to the church. Did you make a decision about which location?
We did, so we always, when we look for places, we always just want to make sure we have a backup. I think it'll be easier for us a little bit to end up filming at the Emmanuel Church. That's just sort of like it's, that's actually next door. But that place was just, it just kind of worked out a little bit better for us. They were able to give us access to bathrooms and such during the day that the bank really wouldn't. So it, it just kind of works out a little bit better for us. And the parking lot's just a little bit bigger too.
We have a bunch of traffic coming through.
Right, exactly.
And that way we can, like, we'll definitely have all of our vehicles that are just kind of tucked deep in their parking lot and won't be on the street anymore.
So then your, uh, address of the event would not be First Midwest Bank? It would be Emmanuel Church?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're gonna send over new insurance forms? Because the ones you sent has First Midwest Bank?
Ah, yes.
So you'll get those changed?
So we've, we've sent in one for the, like, the village of Peatown itself. We have one for, we have one for our holding space. That's actually the other church, the St. Paul's is sort of our, our like holding space for our actors to get ready. They've agreed to give us a couple of rooms there. And then we, we will have another one for Emmanuel Church. And as soon as I'm, I'm planning to go there first thing tomorrow, just to have them sign the contract.
Possible.
What's your movie event?
It's a, kind of like a mystery movie of, that happens in the nineties about a guy who transfers old videotapes and he sees something weird in a transmission. And then he then kind of starts trying, like figuring it out.
Trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. So when asked name of movie, is Broadcast Signal Intrusion the name of the movie?
That is the current name of the movie.
Current name of the movie.
Might change, yeah.
Might change.
They do tend to change pretty often.
Absolutely. Just so when we see it on the big screen, we'll know that a part of it was.
Keep us posted.
In case you guys are wondering, so originally when we called in, because we are filming in Peatown, but like in unincorporated territory, we're filming then tomorrow and Wednesday on Ridgeland. So if anyone wants to come and check us out, we've kind of let all the neighbors know. They're kind of excited, to be entirely honest. And we're, we're at like a house that's for sale, but we'll be there all day. So if anyone wants to come check it out, you're more than welcome to.
Well, and Phil also did say that when he's filming in this, in the area, he will put up, do you see you will put up like bulletins so that if people have questions or concerns?
I have, I have a few samples if anyone want to check them out. But we, what we normally do is we, we have like a, like this little flyer that just says who we are, what's going on. It has my contact information. And then just like all the neighboring houses and businesses that are within arms' reach. I usually just post one or if I see someone on the street, I'll just hand it to them and just let them know that we'll be a movie, we're not, you know, nothing too crazy. Just when you see like thirty people show up, that, that's, that's us. We're, that's all we're here to do. You know, people are usually pretty open and kind of excited by it. Everyone tells me that road to British was shot here. So then, so then we.
Yeah, that's true. There was a boy, there was a one with a boy riding a bike, I just remember there was a kid. There, yes, it was back in the early nineties.
I think Steve McQueen too.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
I just remember him riding his bike and he sat on the porch of somebody's house.
I move we approve the request to film the scene.
All right. Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Moravka to approve the special event permit application, changing the address of the event to Emmanuel United Church of Christ Parking Lot.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Amy, I will just send you a via email like the certificate for the church tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item C, Gallagher Asphalt Pay Request Estimate one final in the amount of one forty-three four sixty-three thirty-four for the twenty nineteen street patching paving program.
Yes, this is for the various patches throughout town and for the research and employing in Ridgeland. And luckily, well, not luckily, good thing that it came in under the expanded budget, you know, after kind of the emergency repairs needed, so. That's what this is for, any questions? You guys went out and inspected and you're happy with it? Yeah, and Bob did too.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Ham to pay the amount of one forty-three four sixty-three thirty-four to Gallagher Asphalt. The work completed.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Marook?
Yes.
Item D, approval of the twenty nineteen Village of Peatown zoning map update.
So we do this on an annual basis and so we did annex a few parcels this past year. So you'll notice that around the interstate, around fifty-seven, you'll see that the Travel Center properties, the Alexander property, which is, is purple, was annexed. And um, those, so those were added to this particular map. And then we just changed over by Pearl. That property was actually zoned public, but it was, it was on the map as, as V three. So we just corrected that. So um, those were some of the changes to this year's official zoning map of two thousand nineteen.
I just had a question, so the, the PUD that was put out by the cemetery that, you know, after the recession hit, it never was built. I mean, so that's still on the map as a, so if somebody wanted to come in to develop that, it would have to be as a PUD or they have to come in to change that or?
Are we talking about Stonebridge?
Just one.
Is that what it was? That came from?
I was trying to remember the name, it wasn't Stonebridge. That was the Jim Paul piece.
Right.
It could have been.
Copper, yeah.
Yeah.
There's an agreement there that defines everything.
Right, does it expire after?
Yeah, I mean, it does expire after a certain number of years. I assume it goes for, you know, at least ten, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, it's been ten.
Yeah, it's been.
Been almost ten.
And in order to develop it again, they, they would have to go through the whole process.
Right. Okay.
So maybe to your point, if, if it expired, maybe it shouldn't be a long hair.
Well, it shouldn't be a P, maybe it should just.
Was it ever? I'm trying to think of what was.
I don't remember.
Fully annexed or not?
That's what I wanted, that's why I was shocked when I kind of saw it on there, because I didn't know if it, if it was.
Because that was kind of in the works, you know, when.
Went under in two thousand eight.
Correct.
Right after the.
Correct, but I don't know if that annexation was completed.
I would have to look.
We'd have to look and double check.
I know we have files on it and the agreements.
Because we had had some whole meetings and, you know, a lot of discussion and a lot of drawings, but I'm trying to remember if that.
But the roads were taken over. Must have been annexed if the roads were taken over.
The only road would have been.
Corning. Corning originally.
Yeah.
Well, it was taken over.
Yeah.
So probably.
So it probably is, and the annexation was probably completed.
I mean, I could verify.
Yeah, let's verify it, I mean.
And then, yeah, should be listed as a PUD or should be listed as R one now that they expired, right?
Yeah, we'll have to look at the agreement and see. I, I really, I know the agreement, but I can't remember the provisions of it. I have to go and look at it.
It's a good point, so we could verify it and then bring it back to the next meeting.
Because right now that land is being farmed.
Right. So table it for next one?
Well, we can approve it, but do you want to table it or do you want to approve it pending?
I mean, I.
I, I don't see any reason why you can't approve the, the map right now. And even if we have to make a change up there in the PUD, but my guess is that, yeah, I mean, that's, that is not a wrong label for right now.
Okay. I move approve the two thousand nineteen Village of Peatown zoning map update.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Parker. Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marook?
Yes.
Item E, ordinances, number one, an ordinance approving offense variance in two twenty-four South Hickory Street. This is coming back after a last meeting. The board can approve this request and this is just an adoption of the ordinance to finalize it. It's ordinance number nineteen dash thirty-eight. An ordinance approving a request for offense variation two twenty-four Hickory Street.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Ham.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marook?
Number two, an ordinance amending the Village zoning code sheds and findings of fact report.
So I can jump, I can jump right in on this one.
Go right ahead.
And Tom, Tom, thank you, you're a building inspector too, so he was involved in this from people before me, I think. So you do have the finding of facts report in front of you as prepared by myself. And um, you see that this case comes to you after a public hearing held on September twenty-fifth in front of the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission, where they do recommend approval with some changes. This did go through two building committee meetings, on one on May twenty-eighth and one on August twentieth, where recommendations were made from those committees to the Plan and Zoning Committee. And that's where planning and zoning made a few changes to you, the village board. So you can see that the, the finding of facts, they did not make any changes to. So then if you go to um, my little addendum report, I tried to color code it so that you could see what changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission made from what the building committee suggested. So the building committee suggested, first of all, on the first page, that we add some information about the base of this, of the shed structure. And that was accepted and, and didn't change from committee to commission. There was a suggestion from the building committee to remove language on a reverse corner lot language, one fifty-seven zero one five. However, and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did not really discuss that. But I think we, I would recommend we keep that language because it's referenced in zoning language and, and the estate in, in the estate zoning section. So we remove it. We did not make any provisions to change that, that estate zoning language. So it suggests we, we keep that language in there. In if you go to, then we're talking about accessory building size limitations. This is where some of the changes would occur from committee to commission.
So going from three fifty to two forty?
Right, but um, I'm confused, I'm gonna confuse myself, there's too many numbers in front of me. They really, the only change that, the only recommended change that they made was, so the full, the, the maximum shed size would be three hundred and fifty. And the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to make, reduce that to two hundred and forty for a maximum size. And a height they wanted to change from fifteen to tw- to twelve in a, in a residential zoning. Did I get that right, Tom? Spore. And then, and, and that would be in a residential zoning. I think in um, in the other zoning categories, they, they took the recommendations of the. So.
Well, I mean, to me, it looks like they just, the client commission wants to kind of keep it like, it should up. Everything's be twelve feet tall only and two hundred and forty square feet, no matter what the district, right?
Right, because, because that's what I originally thought and then so just disregard that. They, um, they kept, they think it's okay for sixteen feet. That was the building commission's recommendation in estate residential district, sixteen feet. And that's fine, they, they didn't want to change that in estate residential. And they, and three hundred and fifty would stay, would be fine in estate residential. And you correct me if I'm wrong. And then if you go down to in other residential districts, it was originally ten?
Right.
Okay. And we had proposed fifteen. But they want that to be twelve. The height, the maximum height.
I'm very confused.
I know, I know. Don't look at, don't look at, don't look at that sheet.
So what, what are we looking to approve here, exactly? So the fifth, so for an estate lot.
Sixteen.
Sixteen feet, three hundred and fifty square feet.
Right.
And for everything else, twelve feet, two hundred and forty.
For resident, other residential.
Yeah.
At, other residential would be twelve and two hundred and forty.
Okay, and then what are population?
And then non-residential would be
Three fifty.
Three fifty.
And sixteen feet?
Correct.
Can we determine the residential or the estates? There, there's no current estates, right?
Right.
Okay.
No.
So that's a, a, a good point.
Right, right. And that's why they really spent most of their time debating the other residential, which is that middle portion where they wanted it to. which is that middle portion where they wanted it to twelve feet and two hundred and forty versus the three fifty. So they just thought three fifty was too big.
Yeah. What's the distinction between a tent, what do we call these sheds or whatever?
Accessory buildings.
A shed and a garage? What's the difference between accessory building and garage? I kind of, because a garage, you can put seven hundred and fifty square feet, right?
Yeah, correct, if I may. The reason that we had the maximum on there at the three fifty was if it, and we have not very many lots at three percent or two percent, whatever we ended up with, that would be that big a, twelve thousand square foot lot, you know, you're still not going to get the three fifty.
Okay.
Can you have a large, how big's your lot?
I don't even know. I was just.
You've got a good sized lot.
I brought the whole thing for.
Pies.
Looking after maintenance.
So what we tried to do is set a maximum shed size, no matter what.
Right.
Because once you go over that three fifty, it's now a garage, period. And we only allow one garage per lot.
Okay.
That was the reason for throwing the maximum in there.
Got it.
The other big argument was for the, of the height. Because so many newer homes have such a high pitched roof. And people are trying to make the sheds look a little more like the house.
Right.
And a couple of commissioners, one in particular, you know, a flatter roof would be better, they're not as tall. So that was the big argument. And that's why they kind of settled at the twelve foot instead of the fifteen. Because we measure from the peak to the grade surrounding, the average, normal grade.
Got it.
But the limiting factor is going to be the two percent of the lot.
Correct.
For the size.
For the size.
So you're going to have to have an awfully large lot to hit three fifty anyway.
Right. And that's compared to other communities like Mantino.
But the height is between either, we're either talking twelve or fifteen or ten.
Do you think there's a height?
You are talking sixteen in estate residential.
Well, I'm looking at the ordinance, you know, the attached ordinance. And that's saying fifteen.
Yeah. Yes.
Is this the new ordinance?
The building committee's recommendation was fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to, so this is, we just left the ordinance to what the building committee
Got you.
recommended until you guys told us what you were gonna accept. And then we will change the ordinance accordingly. Because I wasn't sure which way you would go.
What was the reason we had it? Because you didn't have a two percent or what was it?
Our, ours is kind of a cookie court cutter format based on a lot size. The max was one hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay.
And in doing some research, I was looking at Mantino's ordinance. It's quite detailed. They look at two percent max lot size. They look at total lot coverage, including, you know, pools and driveways and things like that. We talked about, it's kind of difficult to measure. And just to keep things simple, you know, two percent of lot size is.
Simple.
Simple.
Good.
And.
And we get a lot of requests from people wanting more than a ten by twelve shed.
Right.
We've got people on golf carts nowadays that didn't have when this one was made.
Right.
And they could go and curb take up ninety percent of a.
And lawnmowers and snow blowers.
Right.
So theoretically, you could have a detached garage, like seven hundred and fifty square feet. And then a shed, two percent of your lot. Is that true?
I guess that's how it is.
Yes.
Same as an attached, but you can only have one garage.
Only one garage. So if you have an attached garage, you can't have a detached garage also.
Which we have two permits right now that we've issued, but people are taking, sorry, taking their attached garage in the older part of town. One is making it into a master suite.
Okay.
And then building a detached garage. And we have another one that has a itsy bitsy that if you got a car in there, you'd be lucky. So he's just turning it in, you know, removing the things and making part of the house so I can fill that garage.
Got it.
Other comments are like pool items. I mean, pools are for pockets of overhead. Then you got a big giant raft back there. Letting a bigger shed and.
They're familiar.
But keeping them in appropriate size for your lot.
Yeah.
So I think what I'm getting is that the board, the building committee and the board kind of agrees with the two percent lot coverage. That all makes sense. The only thing we really need to come to a decision on is the height.
And maximum size.
Maximum size. So I mean, the maximum size, I think at three fifty makes sense because that's just going to be a factor of lot size.
Very few people would be able to have a shed.
You're only going to get the three fifty in a rare occasion. Couple of double lots in town, right?
True.
Right.
Two bots, they got twice the rest, so they have a bigger lot.
Correct. Correct. So I guess where are we at on the height aspect?
Fifteen feet, right?
That's very common.
Yeah. And I'd say keep it simple across all the districts so you don't have to mess around.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah. So fifteen feet, two percent coverage, you know, up to maximum three fifty square feet.
Do you want to change the estate residential from sixteen to fifteen?
I think that makes sense, yes. So the ordinance that we have in front of us, then the only change in that would be changing the max height on the estate to fifteen.
That's what it looks like. I looked at it quickly, but I think that's correct. Okay.
And then we just need to add this to here. Right. Because we got a.
One fifty-seven, one five.
Oh, nine.
Do we want to bring this back?
Well, you want to note, yeah, but you'd have to, you can do a section one. One fifty-seven, oh, one nine.
Because what we're looking at here is something to do with what?
It's lot coverage. It's just a section in the, in the code that it talks about the one twenty not exceeding one hundred and twenty square feet. But we need to add the two percent language so that people know that they have that option. It's lot, it's a section in the code.
Yeah, we could. I just don't know where it fits. It's one fifty-seven, you got a G seventeen, so there must be an H and a.
Yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we bring this back to the next meeting?
Okay.
Let's get a proper ordinance put together, bring it back for approval at the next meeting.
Okay.
Or if you choose, you can adopt this ordinance and do another ordinance for one fifty-seven.
No, let's just do it. Let's just, let's just do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
So I just need a motion to table this to the next meeting.
Subpo. Right.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Marupka.
March?
Yes.
Marupka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
All right.
Number three, an ordinance granting a special use for a two dwelling residence at four thirty-six West Corning Avenue, Odipia.
This was a nonconforming use and so it's a two flat on this, at this address. And so we just brought it forth. It was, it was in the middle of a sale. It was up for sale. So we wanted to bring it in compliant. It was in a R two, which was a one, a single family residence. And so it was an allowable use, as a special use in that zoning district. So we brought it forth to the planning and zoning commission. It has two conditions. They gave their approval with unanimously with the conditions. One would be that it was, it would adhere to occupancy, occupancy requirements in the code. And two, that it would apply to the current owner and also the person that is currently under contract for the purchase, the purchase buyer, which I don't know who that is.
So was this ever a special use or was this a nonconforming use?
It's just, it's been a two flat for eighty years.
Okay. And so, then usually a special use just goes with the owner, right?
Yes, in this case, there is the language on the contract buyer. And we did not have the name, so I could not put it in the ordinance. We put in contract buyer.
Oh.
I'm not real keen on that, but.
Okay, you put name here before you sign it?
I was told, I was. I was told who, by the owner who it was, but I don't know that for a fact.
So before we, before you sign it, can't you get the person's name to put in there? Right?
That, that would be a good idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Just so, I think it's okay. I mean, we can enforce it. But, you know, contract buyer, well, there's one now. What if they don't do it? And then there's another contract buyer.
Yeah.
So they should be identified.
Yeah, because they want to sell in a couple of years and we often even know who they, you know, so, I don't know. Anyway. I move we approve special use with that stipulation that we get the buyer's.
Insert the name of the contract buyer.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yeah, once we.
Sure.
Once we.
What if we never get the name? That what happens?
There's, you can't sign it.
Okay.
Second.
It's got a, the mayor can't sign it until we get the name of the contract buyer.
Okay.
Subject to that, right? That's how I understand it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is, this is ordinance number nineteen dash thirty-nine, an ordinance granting a special use for a two family dwelling in an R two, one family residence district, which it always has been, as previously discussed. And accepting the findings of fact from the planning and zoning commission with the understanding that the buyer's name would be supplied and listed.
Inserted into.
Inserted into the ordinance. Okay, so that was a motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Ham.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Marupka?
Yes.
Item F approval.
Just ask this quick question related to that. So there's obviously other homes in the village that are nonconforming like this. I mean, how did this even come up? That they came in for this, like who, who pointed this out that they needed a special use or? I'm just curious how this stuff gets caught. Because they should, you know, they all should be, have a special use. You know, we shouldn't just let them be nonconforming just because they were fifty years ago, right?
Well, the nonconforming uses do expire and our code gives a life to them.
Okay.
Okay, so technically, you're correct. After the number of years have gone by that's stated in our code, which are different for different nonconforming uses, but essentially are, you know, anywhere from usually five to fifteen years
Right.
or whatever. Then the nonconforming use is gone.
Okay.
And they need to come in for a special use. Now, whether people really know that?
No.
Probably not. So it probably doesn't occur to them.
But that's why, how did this come up to the bank?
Yeah, they gave it like that. I don't know.
Yeah, it was, it was for sale and they were trying to get an appraisal for a sale.
Okay.
And reached out, reached out to us.
Yeah. I just wonder, there's really no other way for us to, to know what's being transferred or bought and sold, right?
Probably not in a very practical way, not. The one thing, of course, is that the special use goes, you know, is issued to the current owners anyway.
Right.
When the properties are sold, you know, they have to get another special use.
Yeah.
Special use expires.
Okay, I'm just curious. So really unless the bank is requiring it for a mortgage, probably we're never going to know about it.
Right. Because there are several, there are several instances in town
Yeah.
of homes that have always been basically two flats, you know.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I just don't want to get into a situation where you know, I don't know, we're telling people they can't buy or they can't have two families in there because they don't have a special, you know, I don't know.
Right.
It just bothers me that there's nonconforming uses out there that, you know, we don't really know. Anyway. I don't want to cause a lot of trouble.
I mean, if you get up to your ordinance to make them all conforming, I mean, if you want to, we can do that.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like I want to kick anybody out, but it's just nice to know.
Right, I'm not sure what we would be making into conforming uses when we did that.
Right.
I mean, we, but we certainly, we certainly could approach it that way.
Yeah.
There wasn't saying that all.
Because like the neighbor could say, well, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna build the apartment upstairs and have somebody, you know, live there. You're like, well, you know, the neighbor does. He doesn't have a, you know, it's just, it opens a can of worms.
Right.
I don't know. Just my two cents.
Item F, approval of Halloween trick or treat hours. As per normal, we were looking to have trick or treat hours from four to seven on Halloween, October the thirty-first. That was kind of my discussion with the chief board and we've already kind of put it out there because people were asking, what are trick or treat hours? And that's what, that's what they always are. So just a motion to set trick or treat hours from four to seven on Halloween.
Motion to set trick or treat hours from four to seven on October thirty-first.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Marupka, seconded by trustee Parker.
Marupka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Item G, recreational cannabis discussion. I know at the last committee of the whole, I think the majority of the committee of the whole was spent discussing this. I know.
I wasn't there.
You weren't here and trustee Bowden wasn't here. I wasn't here. So just wanted to bring it back to the board, you know, to kind of just open it up the discussion again. If there's any other thoughts, questions, you know, concerns. I know a couple of people have kind of made, a couple of the trustees made their positions fairly well known on how they felt. We just have to come to a decision as a board. Probably I would like to see us make a decision, if we can, at the next meeting, a formal decision. Just because if we're going to opt in, we've got to work on, you know, the zoning, you know, aspect of it. If we're going to opt out, then we don't have to work on the zoning aspect of it. So really, that's kind of the direction I'm looking is just to see, you know, what the consensus of the board is.
I don't mind distributing it, growing it, I don't know. I don't know.
And I don't think we're going to see anything in, I don't see how we could see anything in the village limits as far as a growing. I would, I would think they would need more.
Only in Alexander's property, this recently, I think.
Yeah.
It'd be the only place I know of offhand that would. I've seen it in, the other villages that are doing this usually have agricultural zoning within the village. And they may have a number of hundred and sixty acre plots where there's actually farming, an oil mine. In that case, we've had a couple of people come in and say, you know, they want to build the, well, the like greenhouses.
Right.
And grow it. No, I honestly don't think there's any place in, within our limits, current limits, where that would be done. Or even attempted. I don't believe.
Then they.
They need at least forty acres.
That's what I was going to ask. There's a limit for a.
Yeah, I think it's forty, forty or sixty. I'm not sure.
So maybe we could say that that's possible, just, I mean, we don't have anything, like you said. You know, they, they would have to come in and annex.
That would have to be out west or, you know.
Right, yeah, anywhere, but.
Further.
East.
East.
You grow, you grow to the same size, don't you?
Yeah, they grow it in.
Like big warehouses or warehouses, yeah.
Right. They need the land to build the buildings.
Right.
Right.
So it looks, from the outside, it looks like a distribution site.
Right, they pull out something.
Composty place out there. They may put some kind of greenhouse on Joliet Road. Some glass.
They have the craft grower, and you have the cultivation center.
Yeah, right. Right.
So we gave you, in this packet this time, we gave you the Riverside Cannabis Zoning Sample Ordinance. Just to give you an idea of what an opt-in zoning ordinance would look like. And then, and then that is where it would say, you know, we have those uses. And then we gave you the Hinsdale Prohibition Sample Ordinance, will show you what the sample ordinance would look like prohibiting.
Now, they prohibit it all, and you can prohibit some and permit some, if you wish to, that should get more complicated over there. I would think that you would prohibit everything perhaps but the little stores, I, I don't know, I don't want to get.
So the, the village's cut of this is three percent, right?
Right.
The most we can enact is a three percent tax.
Right.
On top of.
On top of the regular.
Well, it's eight that we get from the state, I think, right?
Well, you get, you get.
They get twenty percent, they're taxing at twenty percent, and then there's another one at twenty-five percent. And then the state distributes to the municipality, I believe, eight percent of that.
Oh, okay.
I think, and then we can impose up to the additional tax.
Sales tax on it, yeah.
Right.
Aren't there limits on how many of the craft growers are?
Yes.
In the state, right?
Yes.
Yeah. There's only so many licenses available.
That's correct, too.
Yeah.
I'm asking you a bit, you're not sure.
Yeah.
And it's by area, they do it by police districts, so in each police district, there can be one or two, whatever.
So we gave you the frequently asked questions again, and so that, those are in the, those numbers.
Hey, I said, I wasn't here at the last meeting we talked about, it's all, I mean, I'll throw my two cents in it. I, I think it's an opportunity for the village to, you know, get some revenue from this. I don't think by opting out that we're gonna keep any marijuana use side of the town. You know, personally, I don't agree with the state law, but, you know, it's the state law, so I don't, I don't know. That's my two cents, I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to approve, you know, and it's all special use, right?
Well, we would, I think, create it as a special use.
Creates a special use, so.
And I guess.
Or, I mean, you could say that it's a permitted use in an I one or something like that.
Yeah, I would.
But I think, I think just making it a special use.
Right.
Then you have a little more control.
But you don't have to say special use within.
Within a.
Districts.
Right.
Within, so, well, you know, you couldn't say special use in all the districts, or.
Just like B three or something.
Yeah.
B three and I one or something.
Something like that.
But that's, that's the next step, you know, we kind of got to decide first, we want to take that next step.
Right. I mean, I would, I don't know if you can do this, but I'd kind of propose that any sales tax you get from it go towards our police pension fund, but, you know, that's, I don't know if you can do that or not.
For sure.
I hope so.
Trustee Bowden, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
I'm for it. Just a bit of a matter of.
I know, I know trustee Parker, I think you're.
Absolutely, yes.
On the other side.
Yes, sir.
Right now, I'm hearing, you know, four trustees here are kind of looking to move forward. So I think we can maybe bring that back to the next meeting, you know, and then we can kind of work on, start working on the idea of how it is, and so forth.
Okay, we can, we can start, you know, with a draft ordinance, and then that could be all, you know, changed or.
Right, so I, I think maybe we can do that for the draft ordinance.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
Okay. And that would be permitting the, primarily would be permitting the, I don't know, what do they call that one?
Dispenser?
Uh, yes, cannabis, kind of in English, cannabis dispensing, not an infuser organization.
Wouldn't we have to put in hours because the state took it out?
Well, yeah.
How many feet from schools and things?
Oh, I, we would be doing all of that.
Right, exactly.
I, I mean, I, it certainly.
How many in town that we could have, and.
Yeah, we would, we, yeah.
We just need to start working, you know, on that language now, you know, and trying to get an idea of, of what it would be, so.
This is. It is the, the cannabis, adult cannabis dispensing center, I think is what it's called, but that's essentially it. It's, the medical cannabis dispenser, they can come, I mean, they're, they're permitted. But you're, and the licenses that are being given for the dispensing centers right now are being given to those that already have the medical.
Right.
You know, license, but that's going to change, you know, a number of areas. But you would certainly have, they, they had a distance between dispensing centers too, as well as, you know, nothing within a hundred feet of the property lot of any school or church or, you know, that kind of thing. We would put, we would, we would do all of that.
Right.
Right.
You know, that would, would be logical, and of course, you can, you can add to, but when you think about it, where would it be? This is a good question, if you're thinking about, it's like a little store. Now, the problem is it's cash, okay, it's all cash. And I, I mean, I've gone into one to look at it, and it's like a little.
It's like an animal store.
Yeah, it's like a bank.
They have all the displays, and you can go up to the taller, and you can tell what you want.
They have security, and, you know, a, a lot like that, because obviously, one of the concerns of the police departments have been, well, wait a minute, if you've got this cash business, it's ripe for somebody deciding that they're going to rob it. That's, that's been the major concern of, of police departments, and one of them, they have a couple others.
Enforcement.
Yeah, enforcement is another one that they've, they're concerned about.
There's no tool available, like, if a person is drunk, they'll give them the D A C blood alcohol concentration. Point zero eight, I mean, it's just cut and dried, that's what it is. But in marijuana use, they're talking about it, they don't have anything, they're not gonna have anything at the beginning of the year to enforce it. Nothing. What's gonna happen to those people?
But again, I mean, as, as Dr. March said, this is a state law, we're not, we're not, yeah, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, I mean,
I understand.
As far as the enforcement goes of it.
This state is in dire physical strait, and so something that's illegal now is going to be legal at the beginning of the year, and they're gonna collect taxes on it, that's the only reason they did it. It's asinine to me.
They're gonna have to start doing urine samples on the side of the road, that's what they're gonna do.
And chief was even talking about field serenity tests, those aren't a hundred percent for marijuana as they are alcohol. You know, I just see these going to court and being kicked out because there's no substantial evidence against them. Whatever.
I also think that the likelihood that one would locate here is pretty small.
I, I mean, at this point in time, I.
Seventy-five in the whole state.
Right.
Right.
The entire Chicago line region is getting forty-seven, K K gets one.
Right.
I mean, I think.
But that being the tech, being the case, this would be ideal for one.